I'd like to welcome you to a special budget meeting of the Marquette City Commission. Today is September 4th, 2018. I would like to call this meeting in order. Would you please rise with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the roll call, all the Commissioners are here except for Sarah Reynolds, who is unable to make it. She has work problems. We have the agenda in front of us. Would someone care to make a motion to accept the agenda? Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Close carries six zero. I do not have any announcements. Public comments is next. Public comments, time when citizens may address the Commission. I'm going to open public comment. If anyone wishes to address the Commission at this time, you've got three minutes. Seeing no, seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move into consent agenda. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Motion to approve consent agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes, please.
Yes.
Close carries six zero. We come to new business. Tonight, one item on new business, that is, community services, arts and culture, public arts, promotional, community services administration, senior services, tourist park, lighthouse park, marinas, Lakeview Arena. Who would like to start it off? City manager, who is not here, okay? Oh, you are there. I'm looking, I'm looking.
Looking at an hour.
He's never here. What are you doing?
I'm not worried that you didn't see me. I'm worried that you said okay.
Struck by your story.
My mistake, okay. Moving on. City manager, would you care to open up?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping items from the last session, which was August 29th. I put on your DS a corrected page 52. That was the, there was a question about the Commissioner's salary and on the fact sheet, and we did get the fact sheet corrected. The number in the budget is correct. We just corrected the note that adds up to that number. A couple of other items during the presentation to kick off the budget, we're throwing out different millages. One was the Headley limit, which would be an additional 2.9782 mils. And the question was, how would that impact, say, a $100,000 house? And for that millage, $100,000 house, the millage would be $149 per year, an additional 149 per year for that 2.9782 mils. And then the millage to the charter limit, which is an additional 4.7275 mils, that additional millage for $100,000 house would be roughly $236 per year. So that's all I had on the notes. We were going to call this the John Swinson Show, but we're now going to call it the John Swinson Hour. So after an hour, if he's exceeded that, the Chief of Police is going to come after him with his taser, so we have incentive. So take it away, John.
I see Blake smiling over there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm pleased to present to you tonight the proposed budget for community services for FY 2019. Community Services, as you're well aware, is Parks and Recreation, Arts and Culture, and the Senior Center. All of the staff that I have working with me and in the pleasure to serve this community with are amazing people, amazing professionals. They show up every day to work their hearts out to try and reduce the costs of these services to the city, to try and acquire grants that might alleviate some of the burden on the general fund, and to make Marquette the place that the people love to come and visit and buy houses in and stay. So all of the services we provide, we really feel help to make Marquette what Marquette is. And so we're very proud of what we do, and I'm very proud of the staff that we have that helped put this entire budget together. So of the staff tonight, Tina Harris will be available to answer any questions with arts and culture or public art as we go forward. So that is an option. Without further ado, I guess we'll get started. The first item is the promotional fund, so 101-290, and that's on page 80. So this is the fact sheet on page 80 for the promotional fund. Very similar to what we've had in previous years. The promotional fund, as you may be aware or may not be, was set up a number of years back. There was a lot of requests coming forward and being presented at various different meetings for fee relief or for reduction of fees by events and by athletic groups. And so this was kind of put together in an effort to consolidate that and make it make a little bit more sense and present it all at one time. So it works kind of like a grant application when these people come forward. So what that's done is it's made your meeting shorter, which I think is a good thing. As you look at this, the very small writing in the columns there have a little bit different fiscal year than the larger writing at the top, so that can throw you off. But FY 19, you'll see the total is very similar to FY 18, so 57,500. We're just a few dollars off of what we were looking at the year before. However, as you work down, you'll see a few things. The third one down is Girls on the Run, Upper Peninsula. So that's a new application that we got. It's a new event, and it's really kind of a neat one. It's where young girls go out and they run a 5K with an adult chaperone. So it kind of gets them introduced to physical exercise in a neat way. So we're suggesting funding that. We had the first event this last year, and they made the request, and we think it's a pretty reasonable request. They are a nonprofit. Glacier Glide, partway down, is one that they're no longer doing the event. They ran into some issues with insurance and whatnot, so that one is, has historically been funded, and we're not doing that this year. The Marquette DDA Rail Jam is also one that we will not be doing. The No-Kamenon Ski Marathon changed their route, so they end their route outside of the city limits. And most of what their fee relief in the past was going for was barricades and things of that nature. So they won't be funded this year either. So those are some of the ones that we've done in the past, and some of the new ones. The Orshore Mountain Bike Epic has used more than they've requested, and they're looking to do even more with Lakeview Arena, so that one went up just a little bit. But that's kind of the short and skinny of the promotional fund. On the right-hand side is the Discount Fee Waiver, and this was set up to allow athletic groups an opportunity to apply to reduce the fees that they are charged, and it's based on a few different factors. These groups, Little League and Superior Land Soccer Association have historically gotten exactly what you've seen there. They added in the request the travel team, which also qualified at a lesser rate. So those are what we're suggesting being funded. Any questions on page 80?
Yes, what happened to the Halloween spectacle? Maybe I'm missing this, but I see a zero for 2017.
Yeah, so that one was in as a promotional fund request when it was in the DDA district, and so it's not in the district anymore, so it's no longer in the promo fund. We'll get to it in the arts budget.
Could you just explain what the $10,350 is for the Beautification Committee, what that entails?
Yeah, let's see here. Are you on the next page?
On page 80, Beautification Committee, $10,350.
Yeah, so that entails, I believe that there are some barricades and things for the Petunia Pandemonium. So that's all stuff that we used to charge for, and this alleviates that. There's also on the next page, we'll talk about actual dollars. So there's some other things that the Beautification Committee has requested as well. There may be some, a little bit of fee relief on the water charge as well in that.
Good. John, when we went over, what we just went over was essentially fee relief.
Mm-hmm.
No transfer of actual money, it's just relieving of all of the expense. Okay. Thank you. Is there a limit to how much you want?
There is not anything written as a limit. Generally, some of these groups have asked for more than what we're recommending here, and we recommend what they've used historically to try and keep things pretty even.
What if 10 new groups come along, say, give us relief?
Yeah, so we could bring those forward if they did. We haven't seen that to be the case, but they have to kind of pass the test. Is it good for the community? Is it bringing dollars into the community? Is it a nonprofit? If a group came forward, say, and they wanted to get $5,000 for their running event, that was just a, you know, we had a number of years ago, the Color Run. So that was a for-profit group that was looking to just make money here in town. Really neat event, but, you know, wasn't a huge benefit to the community. We wouldn't recommend that for funding. So. Any other questions on 80? Page 81. So this gets into the actual cash contributions. So there were two requests for this. One is, and there's very few people that actually, groups that actually qualify for this. City Band is one of them, and that's based on, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, the way the charter is written? Is that for the cash contributions? Is there a limit on what we can do with that?
Well, who we can contribute to.
Who we can contribute to, yeah. So City Band has historically been funded at the amount that they requested, and they provide numerous events throughout the year. So we're recommending that they get that $7,000 for their operations. The Beautification Committee is also in here, and they have requested additional funds this year. So they've requested $15,000. Now, a lot of cities, what they do is they actually have beautification staff, and they actually take care of the overhead and all that kind of stuff for planting flowers around town and things of that nature. We're extremely lucky that we have a group that does it probably better than we could do it. And everything you see around town, from the Petunia Pandemonium to the roundabouts, to the flowers at Father Marquette Park, and things of that nature, is they're working. They requested more funds because of what they've put in at Father Marquette Park and the new roundabouts. So that's where that's at. Any questions about cash on the promotional fund?
I don't follow up on that at all. Your first question?
You want me to follow up on my first question, Paul?
Well, I'm going to do it if you don't.
I would like you to do it.
Okay. So clarify then, if you would please, the money that's been forgiven and then the money that is being requested. I understand the requested monies were, that's $15,000 additional for roundabouts and the one park. So they're responsible for doing all of the roundabout plantings and gardening, and as well as the pandemonium and everything as you enter on Front Street and everything that has to do with the other roundabouts that are currently in place.
Yeah, so just a clarification on that. They've historically asked for $12,000, and they're asking for $3,000 more to cover the new spaces. So not $15,000, but just $3,000 more.
I see.
So, and those dollars are what they use to purchase the materials for the planting. So that's different from the fee relief, because we have fees that we could charge them for water and for barricades and things of that nature, but that the fee relief takes care of. This is more so they can go out and buy the flowers and the other things that they need. Is that?
Yeah, that makes it a lot clearer for me, although I'm still, I mean, I would appreciate if we can at some point in time, and I hate to be nitpicky on this, but that's just a big chunk of change, and I think barricades and water and things of the sort that would equal $10,000. I'd like to understand what that is, a little bit clearer.
Yeah, we can get a list of that.
Not that it's any, I don't have it, I can't imagine having a problem with it, but it would be good for me to know if I got asked the question.
If I could just add, I don't think they ever reached that level of fee relief. I mean, it's kind of set as a maximum, probably set years ago when they actually did achieve that relief. But I think when you add up any relief they get throughout the year, it's very minimal, and it would never amount to that much. They do take, however, the $15,000 or previous years of 12 and 10, and spend that very wisely, so.
I don't discount that at all. I mean, I'm blown away with what we are able to enjoy with entering into the city of Marquette and throughout its roadway side. But just a little more clarification on that would help me for the future. Thank you.
Follow up with that. Any other questions on page 81? If not, we'll move on to page 109. So this is 101-751. This is Community Services Administration. On the fact sheet, this kind of outlines the revenues as we get into this. Couple things I'd like to point out. The second line item with revenues, state grants, you'll see $112,000. That is the grant amount that we're hoping to receive from the DNR for the trust fund grant for Williams Park. So we have that listed down in the notes, but that's to refinish the tennis courts and the basketball courts and provide ADA access to the park. So that'll be a great project coming up. Also, this shows the breakdown of the, how our wages are allocated. So that's kind of in there. Now, listed in here, we have the, all the fees for the field usage and rentals. And the rentals continue to be, you know, an integral part of the user experience in Marquette. If you think about the pavilion at Presque Isle, the Ban Shale, the Gazeebo, the opportunities people have to rent these facilities, that's great revenue. Also listed, 667, that's rent for Matson Park and others. So this would be the fees that we receive when we are renting the park out for special events, say for Beer Fest or for Exchange Club and some of these other ones. So all of those park rental fees go into 667. So you can see there the $20,000 estimated there. We also have the fees that go into the athletic use in here as well. And this continues on to page 110. And 110 gets into some of the programmatic statistics. So here you can see how each one of these breaks down by hours. So you see Barricade Gym, the Senior Pavilion, the Island Store Pavilion, the number of hours that we're seeing these rented. And this is an estimate for 2018, where we're going to be by the end of the year. Still looking at about 60 special events administered through the office, which is a huge, huge deal. There's a lot of work that go into those, as you may well be aware. We also listed some of the rentals that don't fit into, we have a lot of rentals in Lakeview Arena as far as leases, but the ones that are in the parks. So we have Vangos for the ice cream stores, the Rowan Club, the kayak rental business, Superior Kayaking, out at the island, as well as the Maritime Museum and the revenues that we get from revenue sharing with them for the lighthouse tours. And then the Superior Water Partnership is denoted there as, that's in lieu of services. So they typically give us a list of all the services that they provide in exchange for the rent. So lots of things, like dune grass restoration. They helped out with the Black Rocks erosion issue, multiple different things. They also do a lot of services in terms of invasive species. We've had them out at a couple of the parks throughout the year, ridding those areas of invasive species. So value-added things for sure. Yeah.
Go ahead. John, just a side question. What have you heard about Superior Kayaking this year? How are they doing?
Haven't heard anything bad. Haven't heard anything much on the other side. I think that they seem to be doing pretty well. I've heard from, a little bit from the public, that it was a much-needed service. So now that there's an opportunity, a place where you know you can go and rent a kayak and see some really neat things, that was something that was lacking before.
This is the second year, so I was just curious, maybe you heard anything about how it was received this year, where people kind of knew a little more about it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know if the numbers are up or down, but I just know from the public, they appreciate it, so.
Thanks.
What about the playground project? Is that depending on grants? If we get a grant for that? If we do the, you know, that was a while back when Paul and I were pipe packers, but just curious about the, if that's in the budgets of our, I mean, it depends, of course, if we get a grant for that. And then about Presque Isle Marina, is that still just on the, well, we might do, we might not do, or?
Yeah, so as far-
All depends on grants or what?
As far as the Marina goes, we'll get to that toward the back, toward the later part of my hour. But as far as the Presque Isle Marina, or Presque Isle Playground, that was, you know, changed to Matson Park, so that'll be part of that. And then what we'll be doing is we'll be looking to write the grant this year, so that'll be part of next year's budget. And as far as the playground at Presque Isle, which we've gotten a lot of questions about, we're looking with the master plan process that we're in the middle of right now, to address any needs playground-wise throughout the city and sort of prioritize them. So I would imagine that'd be part of that.
If I remember quickly, it was, okay, switch the playground from Presque Isle to Matson Park, which is great. It's a more used park. It's a great idea. And then, once that is finished, you know, maybe look at something, a smaller version for Presque Isle eventually, because Presque Isle really needs to be upgraded. It's been a little outworn for a few years, but that's a part of the process somewhere. You know, if and when the Matson Park gets finished and gets done, then upgrade the Presque Isle one eventually. When it's done, that was the agreement with the friends of Presque Isle, is to, so, okay, we'll take your funding and do this, and we'll get you something in return. Okay.
Yep. Any questions on?
On page 109, you see under 676 reimbursements, 55, 550, and there was a much lower amount last year. Can you explain what that is, please?
676 reimbursements.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, that's actually revenue. So-
Yeah.
The Marquette Tennis Association is going to be putting into that $40,000. So that's toward the match for the grant for Williams Park. And then the other $15,000 is the promotional fund. Dollars go into there as a revenue.
Okay.
The year prior, I believe, was Beautification Committee for Father Marquette.
Thank you. I just saw some increased revenue, and I was hoping we could tap in on that a little more, but-
That one will go up and down based on whatever grants that we have.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah. Any other questions on?
Just for clarification, is the Senior Pavilion, is that the one that's over by the old zoo?
Yeah, it's actually right behind Moosewood. If you walk past Moosewood, there's a pavilion right back there by the community gardens.
Okay.
That's the Senior Pavilion.
So where is that, where's that listed? Or the log cabin that we all use for the grilling and the-
That would be, we call that, why did we list that?
That's a pretty big chunk of revenue there as far as renting rentals.
Oh, it's definitely in there in the revenues. I was looking for it in the stats for you. Hmm. Berry Jam Senior Pavilion. Not seeing it in the stats. But it comes down under fees, so 607.
607.
$52,000. And that's kind of included in all of them.
And then I guess in conjunction with that, when that facility is used and they buy the permit to have the beer and alcohol, that money goes into a specific coffer that's used for strictly maintenance on that building, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, and I think that, let's see, that is 607 with the project number 75367, $3,000 right below that.
Got you. Cool, thank you.
And that, those dollars build, and we can utilize those for maintenance of the pavilion, and we have for the furniture and for exterior maintenance as well.
So the pavilion's not listed here.
It's not, it's not on the authorized, or it's not on the-
Facility hours rented, why isn't it there?
Correct, not yet.
It's not there?
Not yet. It will be up here.
Just a test to see if you're paying attention.
It's early, it's early in the hour.
So the Senior Pavilion is located where?
Right behind Moosewood, so it's right by those community gardens.
Where they have the- Right by Vango Store and by where they do the-
What do they do there?
It's just a rental, so if you want to have like a family picnic there, you could rent it.
Bo-Dag over there. They got line dancing and-
Yeah.
Squirt dancing.
Well, how could I miss that?
I'm telling you, it's a hoot.
You don't like our budget, don't you, Dave?
Yeah.
You're invited.
Because it's not a tennis court. Yeah. Good point. I'll have to look for this.
All right, page 111. So this is the fact sheet for the pavilion and ball- So this is the fact sheet for the Pavilion and Ball Field Maintenance. So there's five part-time positions on this. Three of them are for Ball Field Maintenance. Community Services handles all of the infield, so the prepping of the bases, the prepping of the lines, the mowing of the field, the dragging of the field. And DPW handles the outfield, because those require tractors to, to mow the outside, so it's a union position. So it's kind of divided up in that way. So those two, or three ball field folks prep everything based on our schedule. And the two Pavilion attendants are really the ones that go out and get the facilities prepped, ready, check people into the Pavilion or, or the band shell, or whatever the facility may be, and then check them out afterwards and, and make sure that there's no damage and do the cleaning and things of that nature. And then we have the, the alcohol permits you were, you were asking about listed there. Those have been kind of steadily going up. We're thinking by the end of the year, we'll probably have somewhere in the nature in the neighborhood of fifty-seven. And they tend to go up every year, so. Any questions on the fact sheet, page one-eleven? Page one-twelve is the, the fee schedule. You'll see this page again when we get to Tourist Park, but if you look at the first inch or so is, is really Tourist Park. And then beyond that is, is what's applicable to this budget. The only changes in here that we're suggesting, partway down you'll see miscellaneous fees and then the, the first category under that is flat utility rate. So that has typically been mostly for Matson Park and things of, of large park rentals. If we have events that are plugging in large cookers, things that draw a lot of juice, we tack that fee onto their, onto their contract. And we're suggesting going from two-fifty to three-hundred just because of the BLP rates that have increased. We haven't increased that in a long time, so. The other suggested change, about an inch up from the bottom, is the Barragah Gym. And that's been a steady rate of thirty dollars an hour for a long time. We've done a lot of improvements to that space and there's also utilities involved with operating that. So, we're suggesting raising that to thirty-five dollars an hour. And we did mention that at the Barragah Gym meeting when we schedule that facility for the year. We get all the user groups together and everyone seemed to be pretty good with it. Yeah, but we're going to get into that in the Tourist Park part. Any questions on the fees for parks and ball fields? All right, next one is page one-thirteen. And this is the administration budget. There's a few things. Overall, I guess I'd, I'd point out that this budget, we worked hard. We always worked hard to try and keep, keep the cost as low as possible. And the overall cost has been reduced with this, for this year. The first thing I guess I'd like to draw your attention to, eight-oh-one professional contractual. That five thousand dollars is part of that this year. One of the things that we'd like to do is to, we're looking to write a grant for a forest management plan for Prescott. And so we have, through the DNR, there's a, there's a program where we can get a certified forester out and do an analysis of what's out there, where the trees are at, what the, the maturation is of them, is the stand of trees headed from this to that. And they can also suggest, you know, some maintenance. So, we think that's a really good idea. It hasn't been done, I can't find any records of it ever being done, but it may have been done a long time ago. But we think that that's probably a, a pretty valuable bit of information to have. With that grant, it'd be, the cost would be around two thousand dollars and the grant would reimburse about thirteen hundred dollars. So, there'd be a little cost to the city, but certainly we think would be worth it. The other thing I'd point out is nine-seventy-two. That is the, the full cost of the project at Williams Park. So, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. There's a grant for one-hundred-and-twelve to reimburse. Tennis Association has committed forty thousand dollars. And we met with them and they're well on their way to, to raising that. And so the city's cost would be eight thousand dollars, which is a bargain for, for what we're looking to do there. I guess I'd also point out, when Gary made the call to see if we could reduce budgets across the city, one of the things that we worked to do is to reduce the, the amount that we were originally planning to buy for supplies for the ball fields. So we did a thorough inventory of what we had and just came up with the bare bones, what we for sure need. Probably won't be much left by the end of the year, but it, so that's down to two thousand dollars in seven-seven-five at the bottom of the page. So that was, that was one of the things. And then there's a bunch in Lakeview that we did as well when we get there. Any questions on the administration expenditures?
John, I got one. And I don't know if this is the place to bring it up. I had a conversation with the band, city band director, and he's concerned about the condition of the band shell on the island.
Yeah.
You, I'm sure you know all about it. It's too small, too outdated, too not good. And when is the city going to be able to commit funds to improve it?
That's one of those. We, we have a, a lot of facilities that, that might fall into that category that could use improving. And we're really leaning on the master plan process at this point to, when this comes out, I think everyone's going to be really pleased with the way this, this plan is going to be structured. So each facility gets rated on various different things, accessibility, maintenance, ease of use, condition, and all these different things. And it's, it's a really easy-to-use tool, but it's going to allow us to really prioritize things just like that. So that has been noted in the stakeholder meetings for the master plan. And it was a facility that was, was rated in that process. So, I would, I would say by the end of this master plan revision, we'll have a good prioritized list of facilities and we'll be all seek grants, funds to kind of take care of those. Or to do it out in-house if, if needed.
When will you have this master plan priority list?
So, we're looking to bring it forward to the commission in November and then we'll be submitting to the state at the end of the year, so.
So at this point, there really is nothing planned for the band shell?
It would not be for this budget year, no. With one exception, and that is, when we get into the arts budget, there's oftentimes some crossover between the divisions. And one of the grants that we'll be talking about is for more benches. So we've updated about half the benches out there. And we'll be looking this year to update the rest of them, if successful with the grant. So.
Okay.
In the meantime, you know, to answer a little bit more towards your question, anytime we have facilities and there's an immediate need, something needs to be fixed, you know, the maintenance crews are out and working on that. So, we've worked on some of the lighting issues out there and a few other things and replacing anything that needs replacing. As far as replacing the entire band shell, we would need to, that would need to be a prioritized capital expenditure at the earliest twenty-twenty.
So would that fall under the CIP? Go there first? Or I guess however you apply, you know, go, however you want to improve it, I don't know. But it is, you know, the, the concerts that they're having out there are getting bigger and better. And it's, but the problem is the band shell is just not adequate for what they have, the band, the size of the band, what they could do, ADA accessibility. So, it, it, like, a lot of things, it needs to be improved. So it'd be nice to see, I think a lot of people would really appreciate that. You know?
And you hit on the, one of the, one of the key points, accessibility. And that's one of the ratings within the plan. And the band shell's going to be, you know, show its true colors with that, that it, it's not very accessible at all. And so, but that's oftentimes a, a really useful point when seeking grant funds, so.
Okay, good, good. Just so it's on, in the plan.
Just to continue with that, John, with the band shell, would that be, would that be something you would seek grants for as well?
Yeah, more than likely.
That, that's about a two-year process, I think, isn't it?
Uh, yeah.
By the time you start to write the grant, you actually have the check in your hand.
It usually encompasses two fiscal years, yeah.
Is there a chance that we might actually demolish the band shell and build something brand new under those auspices?
Yeah, that, that certainly could be possible. I would hate to see that happen unless there was a major structural reason to do it. We have invested some, you know, quite a bit of money. If there was a, a renovation that would make it work for the city, I think that might be the better way to go, but.
Possibilities are out there.
Possibility's always there.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm looking at line, hard to tell, seven-oh-two, wages, ball field and pavilion. So it looks like the budget is just a slight increase from last year, but why wasn't the money, or why are we not estimating the money to be spent in eighteen, but then we're budgeting the full amount for nineteen?
So those probably have just not fully hit there. So, the requested FY eighteen budget request for that was thirty-two thousand four hundred.
Yep, I see that.
And then that was those dollars, the eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine. That's because it was only through March, so that hadn't even started yet, really.
Yep, I'm looking at the next one, the twenty-four-nine forty.
Okay. Yeah, I think that Andrew was kind of holding that back a little bit. Typically, we, we are closer to that. I think it may have just been, I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly how, how we're going to be lower this year.
I guess I'm just wondering if, if we really didn't spend it all, if that is a potential area to cut? Or if it's, you know, if it just needs to be fixed, that's fine too. If we're really using that money and it's being put to good use, but.
Yeah, I think that, I think that we would typically be at the, at the amount that we've requested, but we can get back with you on that.
I'd, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Pavilion probably be on like the tranche list, basically. If we get the money to fix it up, we will eventually put it in the master plan and say, we'll fix it eventually, kind of like the playground. Only took like eight, ten years to do. I mean, that was back when Paul and I were pipe packers and John was just a park guy. Hanging all the park, you know, so I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's a great place to have events and we need to update it, but I'd say probably in the tranche list, we'll get it done eventually. Maybe when Mike retires and Gary takes over, Gary can move some money around, get it funded, who knows, but.
It's the Prince Charming list, not the tranche list.
Talking about the accessibility there, especially around the pavilion, or I'm sorry, the, the band shell and whatnot, should things get addressed at some point in time? You know, the, the gray granite rock that we put down in that handicap accessible pathway fifteen years ago, maybe? Between the city workers that volunteered their time in the Junior Chamber, JC's group, which was what got me involved in pipe pack before Pete. And, but anyway, somehow that trail still somewhat kind of exists. And I see people using it frequently, that's good to see. We got all that, all the ground-up stuff coming out of the, the old airport. And I'm just thinking, you know, I don't think it's even possible anymore to have two groups of people just get together on weekends and do a project like that because of all the politics involved. But it was a, a grand and glorious thing that was accomplished in one summer. And if there's a way to either top that off, or if you see a need for it, and maybe you don't because it's not part of the master plan, that, that, that is considered or was considered handicap accessible back when it was implemented. And, and you know, David Boyd was on our committee at the time. He was very concerned about it. He's also a huge activist for ADA compliance within the city. It's great things that, that they make sure that we're up on. But I don't know how or where that would fit into being re, I don't want to see repaved or anything, but maybe redressed. But something that should at least be on the radar, you know, for years to come. Again, I don't know how it was even paid for. It was volunteer hours from, from city people and, and members of the organization. But the, the equipment time was, at the time it was donated, I believe, is how they're going to word that. So, anyway, it's a great addition to the island to keep people off the road. I wish people would use it more often, but, and I wish we could have continued it on further past Lookout Point, but that's just too many trees in the way for that. So, anyway, something I'd like to at least bring up. Thanks.
All right, if there's no further questions about seven-five-one, moving on to page one-seventeen. This is the Arts and Culture Budget. And the first page, one-seventeen, is the fact sheet. Listed here, the first section are the revenues that we're looking at. As we kind of get into this, I gotta squint because Gary makes this stuff so small. So, five-forty-three, that's the grants. So we're, we're suggesting, or we're hoping for fifty-one thousand dollars in grants. That kind of breaks down to the Michigan Council for Arts and Culture Affairs, or MCACA, program grant of thirty thousand dollars. And the MCACA capital grant of seventeen thousand dollars. And that's the one for the benches at the, the, at the band shell. As well as an MCACA New Leaders Grant for four thousand dollars. So those, those three grants are three different divisions of the MCACA grant program that Tina applies for each year. So, we're looking to potentially max those out and to seek the, the maximum amount of funds. It doesn't always happen, but we are hopeful that we'll have some success with that. First portion of that goes toward our Creative Community Program. So, within the fee schedule, there is an opportunity for nonprofits to have one free use of the center each month. And that, those expenses are covered by the, the Creative Community Grant through the MCACA. This year, the New Leaders Grant, Tristan Loma was successful in getting that and using that for the-
Bach Fest.
The Bach Fest. So, he's been doing a great job with that. I forget the name of it. Not a Bach fan, but. So, next year, one of the things that we're thinking might be a, a great use of that program might be toward Art Week. So, Art Week is huge in, in June in Marquette. And so, if, that's, that's the way that we'd be looking at, at writing those. All of them but the New Leaders. We, September eleventh is when we submit, right? Or when we find out? Yep. So, those grant opportunities really kind of help boost the revenues within, within the art division. So, and Tina does a great job of writing those. Have the authorized positions and then the program stats. This kind of gives you an idea of, you know, really what we have going on in the center, the way that the center's used. You see partway down, rentals grant reimbursed. That is- That is, um, about 114, uh, different ones, uh, in the last year that were covered by that MCACA program grant. So, um, great, great way to offer a space to, uh, to folks and to get that covered by, um, a different entity, so. Tina, do you have anything on the fact sheet you want to add?
No.
Any questions on page 117?
Questions, Jenna?
So I'm looking at the stats and it looks like they're all going down, so I'm just wondering if we're measuring the wrong things? Because I know there's great things going on here, um...
Yeah, so we, uh, moved into a different office in, um, the library crossing the restrooms on the first floor, uh, in May? Maybe even a little earlier. So the art center technically has been closed, won't reopen until December. So that's, um, accounts for that because last year it was 186, so... And also, we've, over the years, been kind of adjusting it slowly from when I started of, you know, what are the best facts to show you, so, um, that's the major reason.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And I knew there was something going on with the construction, but thank you for explaining that.
All right, any other questions on 117? If not, moving on, page 118, this is, um, the fee schedule. And we're not proposing any changes to the fee schedule this year. So we're going to run, uh, business as usual. Any questions on what we've been doing there? All right. Page 119, uh, this is the expenditures for arts and culture. Really, maybe what I'd, I'd like to first draw your attention to, um, kind of dovetails in with, um, with what, um, Tina was kind of talking about there. 740, uh, the $7,800. So that is more than we typically have requested, uh, for operating supplies. And really, what we're looking to do there is to, um, to upgrade the furniture and to upgrade the, uh, tables and chairs used in the center. It's been kind of an issue with, with the condition of the chairs and the tables, uh, for a number of years. But this seemed like the opportune time to do it since, uh, the library is renovating that space. And I thought maybe, um, I'd have Tina maybe just talk just a little bit about, um, what P-R-I, Public Library is doing down there, um, and what you can expect.
So we're receiving a much improved, um, space that we're releasing, improved space for the same amount. And, uh, workshops have been more, they're soundproofed, uh, they will have, the atriums are gone, so they'll be more heat-controlled. Um, you won't pass out. We've had artists pass out in the summer and no one wants to use it in the winter. So it's going to be a space that's much more high-demand and usable for art groups. We also will have an office space. If you've ever been to our office, there's three of us in a small room. And there is no privacy for groups that want to come in and talk to us about their projects. So we actually will have a proper space which fits with the master plan of us being more of a city office and providing resources to individuals and organizations. So, um, the whole entire library is getting new furniture, and I didn't want this brand-new facility to open and us having the, um, warped desks and uncomfortable chairs. Um, and especially now that our senior arts has really grown by leaps and bounds, it was important to have comfortable furniture for them as well.
Mike? Tina, I think it should be mentioned also that a lot of local artists put on classes down there and a lot of city citizens, uh, attend those classes. Another thing that should be mentioned is there are a lot of receptions down there. A lot of groups from all around the area like to have the reception in that area, and it works out pretty nice. There's concerts that go on, a lot of different things that go on, so, uh, and it has been quite a while since you've had, I've seen the furniture. I know what you're talking about, so. Has been quite a while. I agree with you. I think it should be replaced as the, the library is, uh, being renovated. It's, it's really not so much for, as much for the library, it is for, as, as it is for a lot of citizens that are down there for a lot of reasons. A lot of city people down there for a lot of reasons.
The other thing that I'd maybe bring your, call your attention to, um, capital outlay, uh, equipment, the last line item. They were requesting $36,000. That would be the cost to replace the remaining 65 benches, um, at the bandshell, which is a cultural asset, uh, within the park system. And $17,000 of that would be through the MCACA capital grant, if successful. So, um, between those two things, that kind of makes up the difference between, um, what was budgeted last year and what we're requesting this year.
Pretty good chunk of change. We haven't been able to meet yet, but it's nice to meet you. And I look forward to, I'm really a big fan of what you do and keep it up, so.
We do have a couple more things. Um, this kind of goes into what Gary had, uh, requested as we, um, looked at the citywide budget as a whole. We did ask, um, Tina to sharpen her pencil on some things, and some of those things are worth calling out. So, um, special events, um, that line item, we, uh, reduced, um, by about $3,000 in that. We were able to do by trimming Art Week a little bit, um, trimming the exhibits, uh, the holiday art sale. None of those things are going away. We're just sharpening our pencils and trying to make them as efficient as possible. As well as, um, reducing the Halloween spectacle by, um, $2,000. Now, the, the spectacle, um, has been sort of a tradition for a while now. And what we're looking to do with that, um, is kind of in fitting with a bunch of other things that are happening within the city. We have historically come before you and asked for dollars for the spectacle now. And the spectacle is at the end of October, which doesn't give much time, uh, between now and when the event happens. And so there's this ambiguity of, is it going to happen? Are we going to have the funds to do it? And, uh, all of these things. So, um, what we're looking to do is, um, we're requesting, um, $3,000 toward that instead of five. And we're looking to plan ahead, so to skip a year, um, essentially. And by skipping a year, um, allows time to start in May for the planning, um, to kind of get the ball rolling and to get some folks on board to, um, to actually, you know, manage that. Long-term, what we're looking to do with that, um, is to, um, reach out and secure some outside funding. And maybe eventually turn it more into a community event than a city-sponsored event. But, um, at this time, that's kind of the direction, direction that we're headed. So we'll talk a little bit, a little bit later about some other, um, fees that were always kind of a shock based on, um, when the budget happened and when, um, when those were approved and then the action that entities needed to take, so. Uh, but that kind of fits into that as well. Tina also, um, was able to reduce the printing budget, 900. And a lot of that has to do with, um, more use and more reliance on Marquette 365, the community calendar. So a lot actually happens in the art, um, world with that, so, um, that is, uh, an asset for them. Instead of printing a bunch of posters, they're able to put a lot of those events on that, that calendar. So, um, resulted in some savings. Any questions on the art budget?
Pete?
As you say, look into donations for your stuff, maybe, for your furniture, maybe, because I got friends at the furniture store. And I picked up Trill House and they got all this stuff. Trill House Place, they got everything.
Been donating for them, for a great place, like the art place. They might be willing to work with you a little bit. You know, Gary likes to hear the word discount, you know?
All right, uh, moving on to public art, page 132. So this is a new fund, um, and, um, basically, I'll kind of read, read the function since this is new. Most everyone here was involved in the creation of this, but... "The city Marquette accepts responsibility for developing a public art investment policy to expand the opportunity for its citizens to experience art in public places. The Public Art Fund, BAF, is dedicated fund to support the inclusion of works of art in public spaces in the city. As a special revenue fund, the public art funding is deposited, transferred, and used for the acquisition, commissioning, performance, exhibition, and cleaning, repair, and restoration of public art." So this fund, this process, as you're all aware, uh, task force was set up and moved forward into the creation of, uh, public art policy, uh, which the commission adopted, as well as the creation of a public art commission, which will, um, kind of handle the day-to-day goings-on of this. As a part of this, um, instead of, um, having it be, uh, a mandated funding source, it was, uh, turned into a policy which committed, uh, roughly $30,000 a year toward public art within the city. And we feel that that's a, um, a value-added thing as we move forward. And as Marquette grows, uh, in the direction that, um, that it is, it attracts a lot of visitors and, um, really kind of creates the kind of culture that, that sustains the, the type of tourism and the type of, uh, people coming to the town, the type of people buying houses and starting businesses and, um, things of that nature. So, um, this is sort of really the first time that we've presented this budget. And, um, on page 133, this is the actual budget. You can see there's not a whole lot to it yet. The commission is still working on creating, uh, the nonprofit, which would handle the funding, uh, side of it. And they've got some things to work out in, in that direction. We're hoping, um, to have that established, and that is, um, where the $750 under operating, or memberships, uh, comes from. So that would be the cost to establish, uh, 501(c)(3). And that's actually the application fee. They, they got the, the legal services donated to do that, so that was, um, quite a feat. Professional contractual, uh, within this year, um, that may end up happening next year, um, but, um, not an issue. That's $7,000. That would be the known cost to clean the Father Marquette statue. We're hoping that we may be able to find a way to do it for less than that. The last time that, um, the expert was in town, that was what it cost to clean that statue. So this year, we're looking at operating supplies, about, uh, $630 and then, um, ongoing memberships of 1,000. So, that's kind of, kind of where we're at. I think that as this, as the, the public art, um, commission gets underway and kind of, uh, really digs their, their teeth into this, we're going to have a lot more defined projects coming forward. This will be a lot more interesting one to talk about when, um, when we have a forthcoming project. Tina, do you have anything to add on that one?
No, just that we will probably complete our guidelines, um, the commission, this winter. And probably next budget cycle, you'll be getting your first, uh, budget for a piece of public art, or hopefully many pieces of public art.
I'm confused. Did, did we, uh, give 30,000 for last fiscal year?
Yes.
So you had a year to do something with it?
No, we have to develop the guidelines and policies. So next year, when we have 90, that means we can write a matching grant to the National Endowment for Humanities and double our money.
90?
Well, next year. I mean, so we're really wanting to accrue that money every year so that, because, you know, just, um...
So you got 30,000...
You were to recreate Father Marquette, that'd be a $250,000 statue.
You have 30,000 sitting right now.
Right.
Okay. And this coming year will be another 30,000?
Correct.
Okay. And you haven't, you spent how much of it? Seven, uh, 750?
Actually, none.
None yet? Okay.
Is that, is that a magic number for you, the 90,000?
Well, you wanting it to grow that much to actually make something substantial for the community.
Yeah, when you really get into it, it's pretty amazing how, um, how expensive, you know, a, a piece like Father Marquette statue or something of that nature really is. It's, it's not a, not a cheap ordeal. So, um, this is, this is more of a, of an account that accrues, so.
Yes, Mike? Is it true, John, that the Father Marquette statue, statue hadn't been cleaned for a long time?
Yeah, it was, um, I'm not sure how many, how many years it was, but the, it was also, um, the initial time, it's kind of hard to, to gauge off of that because there was that, actually some damage to it, too, some of the...
Yeah, they had to be repaired.
Yeah.
It was essentially brought up to date, is what I understand. So it's not going to be that much, you know, if we do it a little bit every year, we're still going to be in good shape. The other thing is, I think a lot of people don't realize, and you, you talked about accumulating some money to be able to write grants. Uh, I'm a, a big, big supporter of, of writing grants, especially to government agencies, uh, especially to Michigan-Lansing agencies, because that's about the only way we can get any extra money out of them anymore. But it should be mentioned that, uh, almost all the grants that get written, and I've written grants in my other career before, so I know, I understand the process, you have to have some kind of funds to match or at least put in. They're not going to give you 100%. Uh, they require as, as part of the grant process that you put up a certain amount of money. The Tennis Association, as you mentioned a little earlier, had to do the same thing. And they came to us and said, "Well, we want to apply for a grant to fix Williams Park." They did. They guaranteed that through their own auspices, they would raise the money. But they had to guarantee some money and put part of it as well. So I think it's something that people need to understand. The grant process is excellent. It's a great way to get more money, bring more money into the city. But there has to be money in a fund to be able to put towards that. Otherwise, we don't get the grant. So really, in, in effect, what it is, is it's like tripling, quadrupling the money that we would otherwise have to spend on that particular project.
Certainly.
But as a policy, we are not obligated to provide the money in any given year.
Yeah, I think that's why we set it up the way that, the way that is, yeah.
So I don't know that it is wise to assume that we're giving the money every year.
The policy is to, uh, provide $30,000 per year in the budget. The reason it was written as a policy as opposed to an ordinance is that we didn't want to tie the commission from year to year.
I mean, it, it isn't, it, the policy can be changed by the commission through the budget process or any time.
So, but as of right now, the policy is we will include the 30,000.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Tina. Next in line, um, is Senior Services, uh, page 159. So 159 is the, um, the fact sheet for, um, in-home services. So this kind of lays out the percentage of, um, of the wages in the senior center that go toward that. And, um, how the, the, um, the contract amount for, um, for UpCap comes in. 2018, that was about $46,000. There's also a possible donation, uh, item for these services, and that's, uh, outlined in that budget donation. 2018, that was about $26,000. That seems to be kind of going up. And again, this, this service is, is, um, an amazing service, um, partially funded. The wages are partially funded by UpCap, um, to provide in-home services for our seniors. So the idea here is, um, as seniors age, um, a lot of things within the house become more difficult. Grocery shopping becomes more difficult, cleaning becomes more difficult. And this service is there to try and keep our seniors in their homes as long as possible, because that's ultimately where they want to be. The numbers on this have been, um, steadily growing. I think that, uh, that this year, we had, um, so far, 138 clients, and that may be well over 140 by the, by the end of the fiscal year. Currently have no, no people on the waiting list. And, um, and as, as outlined under the authorized positions, there are nine homemakers at this time, um, that we have out in, in people's homes. So, great service, um, well-run program, and it's looked to within, um, the UP as the model program, that everybody strives to achieve what we're, what we're achieving with these dollars, so. Any questions on the fact sheet for the, the in-home services? We'll get to the expenses. We'll get to the expenses here in a second. Okay, page one sixty. This is the fact sheet for the allocation in local millage. So again, the, there's a couple of different revenue streams that we have. We have the county millage and we have the city millage. The authorized positions are listed here. And this kind of entails all of the different aspects that we do in the senior center. So from programming to the social work aspects, to financial management, things of that nature. The programs are actually listed in the bottom box. So information and referral, in twenty eighteen, there's, we had contact with just under three thousand people. Those would be people walking in off the street, asking, you know, questions of the center, "Where can I get these services? What might be resources for me for this particular need?" Outreach by the social workers. Those would be like house calls and when they actually go out and analyze situations for the seniors. Health-related, so that would be services that we outsource. So we have clinics for toenail clinic. It becomes much more difficult to clip your toenails as you get older. I'm finding that out. We have flu shots that are provided, things of that nature. So there's a lot of services, and our staff doesn't do those. We actually outsource those. So that's what health-related ones would be. Financial management is a great one. And I'd just like to kind of, so one thousand fifty-six clients reached in twenty eighteen. So that's sort of a two-week enrollment. That's mostly Medicare and Medicaid. And that's an open period between October fifteenth and December seventh. We train our staff specifically for this, and there's a lot of questions and a lot of uncertainties that folks have, as you may well imagine with the insurance world. Last year, this last season, we had three hundred and fifty-six people served, and they saved a total of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and two estimated dollars by using our services. So that type of resource to our seniors is, I mean, I can't say enough good about it. It's really doing amazing things for people within our community, so. And then we have the homemaking units there as well. You have any questions about page one sixty, the fact sheet there?
I do. Apparently, you added a senior center manager?
Yeah, that's a great.
What's the story there? Why did you add?
Yeah, so I was going to talk about that a little bit on the next page, but this is a great time as well. So right now, our senior center coordinator is part of the union, and she is going to be retiring in November. So we're in the process of working to fill that. And it's been the administration's opinion that a senior center manager should really be the type of position. So we're going to look kind of far and wide to get the type of manager that we really are looking for in order to manage the center. So that was an addition to the staffing. The union position, we'll be negotiating with the union, keep that as a union position. And kind of, we'll be re-titling it. We haven't come up with that yet, but it would be working on all the types of things that are currently done by the coordinator, such as like the newsletter and some of the program oversight, day-to-day, things of that nature. The senior center manager, we're going to look to do things like helping to project what the trends are in senior centers nationwide. How is the new senior that's coming into the center different from the senior that's traditionally been down there and wants to maybe play bridge or cribbage? What types of activities are they looking for? What do we need to be prepared for as we move forward? And then working on, you know, what the next generation of the actual center, the physical center, should look like. So we're looking to change things up a little bit, but add a lot of dynamic elements to it.
So the director's going away?
The, Jane Palmer will be retiring in...
She will be replaced. You'll have a different position replacing her.
Right, so we'll hire a senior center manager, and then we'll fill that union position to do the operations and day-to-day. And the other piece of that that I can mention, the goal with that also is to, there's a lot of connection between arts and culture and the senior center. There's a lot of overlap with programs, senior arts, things of that nature. So the union position, the new union position, what we'll look for that person to do, day-to-day newsletter stuff, all the stuff I mentioned for the senior center, but also to spend part of their time with the arts and culture, handling the management of all the senior programs that are over there as well. So that position, we'll look to have split between the two. For simplicity's sake, it's all listed in the senior budget for this year, and we'll look at how that shakes out for next year.
If I could just add, just to simplify, we are replacing Jane Palmer, but we're adding another position to kind of, it's a non-union position to kind of watch over, manage the whole thing. But the key here is that the senior budget is a dedicated millage mill. And it's, the money is there within that mill to pay for these positions. So it's not any addition necessarily to our budget. Makes sense?
That would be similar to what we do with Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec has a management position with the coordinator. Arts and Culture has a management position with Tina Harris. And then the senior center would have this management position, so. All right. Any other questions on page one sixty? All right, one sixty-one. So account two ninety, Senior Services. We'll start with the revenues. The first initial few lines there, that is the city millage. So that's point three-five of a mill. And that's the revenue that Gary's calculated we'll get for, based on that millage. Down a little further, the four five, five-four-three, State Home Care Service. That's the UpCap contract that I talked about for those in-home services. And that's been kind of steadily increasing, too. So we're going to be at forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-five. And then item five eighty-six, so that's the county millage. And the contract that we get with that, you all will be seeing that probably next month at the commission meeting as it comes forward. And it's anticipated to be about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, so. The city millage is very specific. It can only be used for certain people of a certain age. It can only be for city residents. The county millage covers a much wider service area. So that can be allocated towards city residents or Marquette, Chocale, or Powell Township residents. So we have people utilizing the center, and we track what their address is and how we allocate those dollars that come in from the different revenue sources, so. They do a great job. The staff does a great job of keeping all that straight. There's a lot to it. Going into the expenditures, I think that really the six eighty-five is pretty similar to what we had in previous years. And that's just what it takes to kind of keep things going, so. I don't really have any changes within that budget, minus a few minor fluctuations, so. Any questions about one sixty-one? Page one sixty-two, so the allocation and local millage expenses. This is where you'll see the additional wages. And that's primarily the difference between this and last year's budget. So adding the manager in there, you see the salaries and all of the different things associated with employment are increased. The other thing that I'll point out, eight oh one, professional contractual. This has a couple of things that are really, they've been programs that we've developed that have been well-received. The senior theater program, ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. This program has been outstanding, gives seniors an opportunity to act, as well as all the other things that go into stagecraft, such as lighting, building the sets, things of that nature. And really has been well-received, as well as the senior art classes at forty-eight hundred dollars. Lots of value for the dollar for our seniors, so those have been, have been great. Line item seven twenty-seven, office supplies. This is another place where, I guess I'd say that this is a one-year anomaly. So we're asking for eight thousand, one hundred. And this is to partially cover, so you heard about the new tables and chairs in the art center. What we're requesting is that half of that purchase be made in this budget because the seniors have requested much more comfortable stuff that's not as cheap as we normally, as a normal folding chair and whatnot. So there's some dollars allocated toward the programs that they use in the art center in that line item. So after everything's all said and done, we anticipate this budget to be a little bit back to more in line with what it historically has been after we figure out all the staffing dynamics and negotiations, so. Any questions specifically on this? I guess maybe the one other thing that I'd point out, nine five seven is really the Silver Sampler program. And I think that's in the third year, has been an extremely useful program for seniors and is really part of the dynamic aspect that we're looking to do to move the senior center into the future. So as, we all know people that are retiring, you know, as we speak, and as those folks retire, you know, there's a loss. So a lot of times, their job is everything, and all of a sudden, they're trying to figure out what direction to go in life. And this is a great program that takes them out, mountain biking, running, kayaking, does winter activities like skiing, fat biking, different activities that utilize the resource in the area, and builds a social network for them. So it's been great. These people have all kind of bonded and have contacts, and we found it to be maybe one of our most popular programs, so. That's been a huge asset to the city.
John? Account seven two two, seven two four, Retirement MERS. Retirement DC, I don't know what DC is. Those have a small jump there. Could you just explain why?
Yeah, and I'll let Gary actually answer that one.
Defined contribution plan.
Oh, okay.
So this really, for the DC, that's usually your department heads that were hired. I believe I was the first one to hire in, in the year two thousand, under the DC plan. So we aren't in the MERS plan. We're in the Defined Contribution Plan. And it's really just a function of your salary. So whatever is John's, or whoever's salary is, you know, how you saw on the fact sheets, how the salary is spread out. So those people that are in the DC plan, that's just a calculation of their salary and what that is. And then the MERS plan above that, that's the actuarial required contribution that the actuaries tell us we have to contribute for the regular employees, usually the union employees for MERS. Did that explain that, or?
Explains it, yeah. You don't have any choice in it.
Yeah, it is what it is, but if we can explain what that is, then...
John, I just want to thank you on behalf of what the senior center is and what they do. We live in a very dynamic time. And I remember having this discussion probably maybe four or five years ago of what's a senior? Because that has so radically changed. I mean, it used to be a senior was some gray-haired person who sat there and played cards all day, or had really a different world than seniors live in today. And I'm sitting here thinking, one, two, three of us would qualify as seniors. Ron getting pretty close. And I'm not going, I'm not going to the city manager. But I'm saying, I'm saying that the dynamic of what we want and expect as we age is radically different. And I don't know how the senior center can keep up with all that because those changes will be certainly very rapid and very significant and very difficult, I think, to keep a hold of. So thank you for what you do and for looking forward with it.
You're welcome.
Just a little clarification under the senior skate there.
I didn't call you a senior.
He's losing his hair, like you.
It's great. I'm in great. The senior skate, I mean, does that encompass a lot of other activities? Like you said, the biking, the other aspects of that? Or is that under the Meet the Silver Sampler?
No, the senior skate is a program that's been separate. And historically, that's been Monday nights at Lakeview Arena. And the senior center has covered those, that hour of skate for the entire season for several years now. And we're actually, the amount, the dollar amount that we're at there compared to the number of people taking advantage of it was at an all-time low last year. So what we are doing this year is we're modifying the hours. So it's not going to be Monday nights anymore. It's going to be Sunday afternoons. And we're hoping that instead of nine o'clock at night, you know, when it's cold and snowing sideways, more seniors might want to come take advantage of it on a Sunday afternoon. So that's going to be, that's going to be a transition period for a few of the folks that have been there for a long time, but we're hoping to at least double the numbers. We've had about an average of fifteen people come into the senior skate last year, and there was a time where it was about thirty-five. So we're looking to get back to that.
Yeah, it's a lot, asking a lot for seven thousand dollars.
Right, so we want to get the numbers back up on that, yeah.
John, is part of that senior hockey?
Uh, no. So this is just skating, yeah.
Just skating, okay.
So.
One class you might want to think about adding, my dad is an engineer, loves to fix and anything, but when it comes to a smartphone, he'd rather throw it like. I've had my daughter teach him a few times. Something you might want to offer your seniors like Mike is a cellphone class. You know, have seven little kids that would like to volunteer to help them. I mean, that's the way to go. I mean, have the kids teach them how to work a phone, you know? And just because Ron does his hair black, doesn't look as old as Paul, you know, I think he might not have the senior age. But, I mean, there's lots of seniors that know how to work their phones, but there's seniors that don't know if they have smartphones, want to keep in touch with their grandkids and all that stuff. Something you could offer, you know, and just delegate somebody to do the work for you.
What I'd say to that, Commissioner, is we can't do everything. And what we do with that is we refer people to Northern's Lifelong Learning Program, and they actually have classes on that. So anytime we can utilize other services or point people in that direction... and they actually have classes on that, so anytime we can, uh, utilize other services or point people in, in that direction, we do a lot of that, so... Because there are people that have defined programs already out there, we try and take advantage of that.
Yes, Mike. Yeah, and John, that, I think, something that should be mentioned too, those programs are free to seniors. So it's a, it's a great way to interact with Northern Michigan University too, and take advantage of what they have to offer. It doesn't cost the participants anything, so...
Community schools too. They have programs.
Yeah. Any other questions on the senior budgets? Okay. Uh, moving on, Tourist Park, uh, page one ninety-five. Um, this is the fact sheet for Tourist Park, outlines how we allocate, um, the, the staff. You'll see that there's, um, staff in our office at Parks and Rec that have wages in here, and, and really, um, you know, this is a seasonal facility, so we handle all the reservations and calls, you know, all year round, um, through our office until we get that, that temporary staff on at the park, and then we switch everything over to the park. Stat- statistics here, um, total camping reservations in twenty eighteen, about fifteen thousand. Revenue, um, I think is going to be more than, than three hundred thousand. Um, we also have, um, sales, uh, out there, so we have, uh, firewood and we have, um, ice and a few other things, um, so those fall into there. We're looking, the number of days open varies every year based on the calendar, um, twenty eighteen was about a hundred and forty-nine. And the, the capacity there, um, is kind of a tricky thing, it doesn't look like it's very full, but the reality is, um, everybody leaves, and usually it, you get people that come and stay through the weekend and then they leave like on a Wednesday, so a lot of sites will stay, um, stay open on, on Wednesday even during our busy times, and then your bookends, so the beginning of the year and the end of the year, um, are very sporadic and very weather-driven. So when you have days like today, there's not a lot of people thinking about going camping, but by this weekend, they'll be all hitching up and heading out there, so, um, sixty-four percent is pretty good, so... Well, oh, sorry.
Do you have a, uh, drop in, uh, in, in occupancy with the new campground in town?
Um, so, I'm going to get to that a little bit, um, in a couple of pages, but what I, what I would say with that is, um, we think we're going to be above what we budgeted for revenues, but, um, we're still on the fence as to whether or not we're going to break a record this year. Um, we've broken a record for the last four years in a row, um, so it's going to be a nail-biter toward the end.
Fact that you're close is pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's going to be really close, so, um, I would say that, that the new campground, um, you know, the private campground is, um, addressing the hundreds and hundreds of people that we have always turned away. Um, so I, I don't think that it's, it's, I think it's a good, a good thing for the community, so...
Turned away, that many?
Yeah, when the sign says full, no vacancy, I mean, there's not a whole lot that we can do. Um, I mean, there's in the middle... That's in the plan, we'll, we'll definitely, we'll definitely address that. If there's no questions on the fact sheet... We'll move on to page one ninety-six, um, and you've seen this sheet before, but now I'll talk about the stuff, uh, at the top. Um, these are the, this is the fee schedule for, uh, Tourist Park, and we're not looking to change, um, anything within that except, uh, we are adding a, um, a fee, and that would be the hammock stand rental. Um, so that ordinance, uh, that we can't hang anything from trees does also apply to campgrounds, and sometimes people show up and all they have is a hammock tent, which is, it's hard to tell them you can't do that. So we came up with the idea, there, they do sell stands, so we've purchased some this year, and we'll be, we'll be looking at, uh, increasing the supply and getting some better ones next year. Uh, but it gives them an alternative when that's all that they show up with, so, uh, and the rental would be seven dollars, and that would, uh, the goal would be just to recoup the cost by the end of the year. Not looking for that to be a revenue generator, just a, a, a way to make our ordinance, uh, go down a little easier. Any questions on the fees? I would anticipate next year, maybe we might, um, see some increases, we increased them, uh, last year, so, uh, we try not to do every year. Page one ninety-seven, um, Tourist Park, uh, revenue and expenses. So this is where I can say, um, that we have the goal of being at, um, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars by the end of the year. Um, last year, um, was, um, three hundred and ninety-nine. Um, and I think that we're for sure going to be able to make the, uh, budgeted amount of three hundred and eighty-three, whether or not we break four hundred. Um, that's our goal, and we'll have a party if we do it, but I'm not sure if we'll make it, depends on the weather at this point for the rest of the season, so... Concessions, uh, that's going to be where ice and hammock rentals fall, um, and then sundries would be, uh, where the, the firewood revenue, uh, comes in. And that one actually, I think the firewood revenue is going to be higher than we budgeted, we've sold a lot of firewood this year, so... That's revenues, um, when we get down into the, um, expenses, um, seven forty, the operating supplies. Part of that is refinishing picnic tables, so we're on a cycle where we do a few of those every year, um, and replace them. And then, um, cleaning supplies, about six thousand dollars, um, staff uniforms, we've required of recent times for all the park staff to have uniforms, um, you know, a, a city shirt so that everybody knows that they're a city employee, so...
Just something, uh, observation, um, really excited about the new t-shirts, and I've seen a lot of them from Prescott Island and whatnot. This would be a similar, uh, takeoff that you could do, you know, the swag from the, from the local campground. I realize it's one other expense and, uh, more, more stuff to store, but taking a page from the provincial parks going around the lake, um, man, do they sell a lot of it. I mean, you know, you get that one cool day and somebody needs a hoodie, you don't have to have a bunch of options, but, um, um, I would, I would think that it might be something that we want to look at for Tourist Park specific, just a thought.
I would say, um, that that's a great idea, and when the time comes to update the office, we don't really have a lot of space for stuff right now, um, that might be a possibility. Right now, we give them lots of, uh, great local businesses where they can go and, um, you know, pick something up, but...
Yeah, that's a great thing too.
We're kind of cramped right now.
Yes. Here's a problem. We took in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenues, and we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses.
And I see no transfers out. So in effect, we managed to make as much as we spent, and we call that successful.
Well, one of the balancing measures, the very last, because we're required by state law to present a balanced budget, that includes addition to reserves, so if you look at the expenses, the very last item is actually what...
So, okay, so addition to reserves was actually transfer out into what?
It's not a transfer out, it's just an increase in the Tourist Park retained earnings. And we're just saying that you could actually take, so for FY nineteen, just budget-wise, we're projecting about to bring in more revenue than expenses by the tune of eighty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Okay, so what are we doing with it?
How much is it?
It's sitting in retained earnings, and it will be used for future projects, which...
Why would we want to do that?
So, so this is getting back to, uh, what Commissioner Plord, uh, spoke about on another budget. So the really nice thing about having, uh, a fund balance there is that as we go forward and as we need a new building, uh, for the office, and as we need new campsites so that we can get more revenue, as we look to get these grants to do that, there's matching funds that are required. So we're able to use, uh, fund balances, the matching funds, instead of coming before the commission and asking for general funds.
No, I, I understand that, but what I'm getting to is, we're not taking that money and putting it into another city fund where we actually need the money. We're just getting richer in the Tourist Park, or whatever that fund is, and then we're balancing at some point expenses against that to use the money, which makes us better, which gets us more money, which maybe gets us a fund balance that we spend anyway. See what I mean?
Correct, Tourist Park is an enterprise fund, and we do have to treat them legally separate, so we can't just start rating it and put all the money into the general fund, but with all of our enterprise funds, if you look at five oh, like, five oh eight, seven eight five, eight oh six, that's the administrative charge, and if you remember the first night, uh, we were looking at fixed charges in some of the accounts for revenue. Well, that's what those, that's what those charges are to these utility funds, our enterprise funds, is basically the administrative overhead that we're charging. So the general fund does reap benefits in that way, by making those overhead charges. And then there's the tech fee below that, uh, each fund that has technology in it, those are being charged by the IT Internal Service Fund.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see that, but I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, is it not possible for us to get to a point where we have a trigger mechanism that says, when we exceed a fund balance of X, that that money then is transferred out of the enterprise fund into a general fund for the city, such that we could actually see profit, terrible word, coming out of the, out of the enterprise?
Yeah, and that's certainly up to the city commission's discretion, you could certainly implement that, but it's not something we're recommending as a staff, because we, we would like to start, because Tourist Park is one of the pride and joys of the city, we would like to see investment continue in that tonight. I, because I brought something very similar up to John earlier in the budget process, and he, he kind of talked me in off of the ledge on that one, just with plans that he has for the future of the campground.
I mean, that's something that I, I think as a commission, especially as we look at some of the dry days ahead, we need to look at those things and those opportunities if indeed we're being as successful as we are with, with this particular enterprise fund. Obviously, we're not making the decision tonight, I only broached the problem that there's an opportunity here that would help other funds within the city.
Just, uh, historically, um, you know, we turned this into an enterprise fund, I don't know, it wasn't that long ago, was it, Gary?
Uh, it was probably at least ten years ago, maybe a little.
But the, at the time, Tourist Park was, was getting money from the general fund.
Right.
And we want, didn't want to support it from the general fund, so we created the enterprise fund, in other, in other words, make the park successful so it could pay for itself, and then your success will be, reward will be infrastructure and, and, and repairs that you can actually pay for out of your own revenues. And you're probably right, Commissioner, that at some point, you know, depending on how our budget goes in the future, you may look at that as a resource, to use Gary's term, I think he said rob from it or steal from it, what was the term he used? I don't know, but, uh, raid it, okay, raid it, but...
Opportunity transfers are better.
Yes, but, you know, going back historically, we were, we were trying to get away from the general fund supporting it, kind of like the marinas and everything else, that, that, you know, your own success will be rewarded by, uh, you know, the money you'll get back to keep yourself, uh, running. And also I would point out that we've made quite a few improvements lately, we have new, new showers, new restrooms, uh, things that may have been cut from the budget in the past.
Well, they were, I remember doing it, yeah.
If we didn't have this enterprise fund in place, so, yes, it's a few...
Again, I can see the values of it, but what I'm just projecting is that as these values pay off in the future, we may want to begin to look at the opportunity to, to do some of that transfer. I, I hadn't...
If we're not careful, John will make it balanced like at zero, so...
Yeah, you guys are doing really good at that, I see that.
On, on that note, just, just FYI, um, there is a land use plan for Tourist Park, and the capital expenditures in land use plan are in excess of two million dollars to bring it up to where we want it to be, so, um, obviously, we wouldn't be looking to use two million dollars from the fund, we'd be looking to leverage grants against that, but there's a big need there, um, in order to do what's in that plan, so...
How much is in that reserve fund at this point?
I don't have that on me at this point.
Yeah.
About four million.
Yeah. No, I mean, is there a ballpark figure?
Uh, it's more than four hundred thousand, I think, it's around four hundred thousand.
Yeah, if you look at page...
She took that money, we wouldn't have to do anything with reserves, would we?
If you look at page ten, we show the, these are actually fund balances and retained earnings for each of our funds. Now, word of caution is that fund balance doesn't equal cash, but if you look at the unrestricted fund balances and retained earnings, that should be close to cash. So there's probably a good, I would say in Tourist Park, there's probably close to a good five hundred thousand in, in the reserve.
I know we got a lot of complaints before, John, of the emails, I think it was like last year or something like that about, I know you just, Mike says you upgraded the bathroom, which is great, because we had a lot of complaints about that before, any complaints this year, because I know we got a lot of emails, people complaining about the park not being adequate to their standards.
Well, um, part-time employees, uh, there's always a, um, a, uh, training period where we get them kind of clued into exactly what's required of them, and cleaning bathrooms is, um, is one that we, is a, we're constantly working on that, and we've had a, a Tourist Park manager this year that's done a great job at hitting that one home, so, uh, as far as I know, no complaints.
That's good, because I know that, that's what, that's, the new marine manager's been great, brought the, for Cinder Pond, because that was the biggest complaint I heard last year, and now the complaint is, the staff doesn't do enough work for him, he does all the work, I mean, that's the, that's, I mean, marine manager's the key, I mean, you guys do, you guys know, a manager can delegate the work, you can only delegate so much work, you have to do it yourself to make it good, so that's good, you're keeping up on things.
Any other questions about Tourist Park? Well, moving on...
Don't worry, we got a plan for it.
Page one ninety-eight, um, this would be Lighthouse Park. So, um, this is a new fund, uh, the city manager, um, created this year. Um, and there's not a whole lot to discuss about the, um, the fact sheet, it's more of a placeholder. Um, but on page one ninety-nine, when we get to the, um, actual revenues and expenses, um, you can kind of, we can kind of walk through this, and, um, Gary can help when he, when he needs to, but, um, basically, we've kind of outlined a budget here. The revenue we're expecting, we're really, really hopeful, this is the first year, and it's kind of a shot in the dark. Um, we know that, uh, Maritime Museum, um, revenue sharing has historically been about eight thousand dollars the last couple of years, so we have eight thousand dollars in there, um, with that, and that's dependent on a lot of different things. Um, and then we have fifteen thousand dollars in rentals, um, so that would be rentals of, uh, the captain's house as a short-term rental, um, or, um, in the future, that line would be used, uh, also for the station house, if we turn that into, um, sort of like a retreat center, uh, or a space that could be rented as a conference center, um, things of that nature. So right now, um, we're hoping maybe we can get twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue, that's maybe pie in the sky, especially since the Bike Path project and the sewer, uh, aspect is delayed on that, um, on that, uh, project. So, um, we have to have a sewer before we can start renting that facility, so we may see a little bit less than that. We're hoping to have that started this week. Um, so when we look at the expenses, um, you've got operating supplies about five thousand dollars, and that's really, um, just for, um, supplies for a short-term rental. Um, you've got, um, professional contractual, that'd be like your pest control and your, uh, site services, um, and the repair and maintenance. And that's going to be sixteen thousand dollars, that's what we're estimating it's going to take to get the captain's house rentable. Um, so that's kind of where that's at. Capital outlay buildings, um, we kind of have the rest of the bond issue in there, whether or not we spend it, you know, this year or the next. So we'd be looking at, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that'd be Bike Path, um... bike path, um, parking, um, arch street, uh, extension in whatever fashion that, uh, turns out to be, we're in the design phase of that. So, that's kinda, kinda what falls into that. And then whatever's left over would more than likely be, um, prioritizing. I mean, we have that whole master plan for that whole, uh, uh, property, and there's a lot of, of money to be spent, there's a lot to be done to the interior of the lighthouse. There's, the renovation of the Coast Guard Station is gonna be expensive, so we're just gonna make this go as far as we can on that plan with the, um, priorities that we've already outlined to you. The bond principle, um, on that bond is a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, the end goal would be, um, you know, to have revenues exceed that once we're up and running. But that's, that's the, the cost of owning a historic, uh, property. Any questions on the lighthouse?
Instead of a B and B, John, is it more like a short-term, instead of a B and B, more of a short-term rental, like for events, whether it be weddings or, still, whatever event, you know, you know, the place I go to once in a while has a lot of events and, you know, for I M U and other things. So, if that possibly gets shut down, then would this be able to take over some of the va- I know Fred's talked about maybe some, you know, weddings up at the lighthouse, possibly small ones, but-
Yep.
So, it would be more event rental than more like B and B type stuff? You said captain house, possibly B and B, but?
Yeah, um, so, we're working on, Parks and Rec Advisor Board's working on a policy to allow for rentals for private use. Right now, we don't rent any green spaces in the city, um, for private use. We refer them to Lakeview Arena or the Pavilion or the gazebo or, um, any of these facilities where they can rent. You can't rent Mattson Park, um, and have a graduation party, otherwise it'd be rented all the time. So, but this would be the exception. So, we're looking to have, establish one place, um, on green space and one s- place on the beach. And Prab will be, um, kinda working through that in the next couple of months and coming forward with a policy recommendation over the winter. And that would, um, that would help to close the gap on, on the revenue if we could rent that. And it would be at the, um, already established, um, seven hundred and sixty dollars that we rent, uh, other parks for, uh, would be what the, the fee would be for that. And then, yeah, so, there's, there's options as we, as we move forward and as we look at that. Captain's House would be more, we're gonna put out a request for, uh, proposals, um, shortly, and we're looking for partners within the community to come forward and whoever gives us the, the best proposal, um, you know, it could be any hotel in town, it could be, uh, Nestle Down Bed and Breakfast, it could be anybody that's interested in partnering. And then we'll, we'll take the, whatever's in the best interest of the city and bring that forward to you, um, as an option to, to run that. And so, they would rent it out and then give the city, um, a portion of their, uh, proceeds. So, whatever the best option is, we'll, we'll bring that forward to you as, as we look at that. But again, we can't rent it until we have sewer. So.
John, is there any reason we haven't, or maybe you have looked at using natural resources trust fund as a granting source for the projects, if they're all or part, or?
Yeah, it's, that's certainly an option. So, we have natural resources trust fund, we have the passport, we have land water conservation, we have coastal zone management. Really, it becomes a, um, sort of a waiting line for these projects and the grants. The next one, the hopper, is, uh, Mattson, uh, Park Inclusive Playground. So, that's the one that, uh, we're looking to write in the next year, uh, for the twenty twenty budget. So, you can't do two in one year, um, so it kinda gets a little backed up on those. But there are some specific, um, grants that are available to historic light, uh, properties, and we're gonna be investigating that as we go forward to see if we can't use those dollars as matching.
Thank you.
Two questions now. So, you don't have a Mattson replacement park in, in lined up already?
Uh, the playground?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, so that would be, the Marquette Playgrounds for All has been working on that. They have some funds raised toward the end goal, um, but that would be, uh, April twenty nineteen submission for that grant. So, we'd be looking for the maximum, uh, three hundred thousand dollar development grant from the D N R on that. So, that one really came down to, we switched locations from Presque Isle to Mattson, and then, um, it really came down to, uh, the group working toward fundraising. And the other piece of that was, we thought about applying last year, but, um, with, uh, some of the staffing changes and then updating the master plan, um, that kinda took all of our staff time for, for this existing year, so.
And you don't have any, you don't, you don't have any physical purchases or anything like that for the upgrade of the Presque Isle playground as well?
No, yeah, we do not.
Wow, I thought we were much further ahead with that than, than, at the grant writing process. Okay. And I guess my biggest concern with the, the opportunity to utilize the, the lighthouse as we just brought out, again, it's always coming back to parking, you know? Short-term rental, you're gonna have one, one or two vehicles, and that should probably be in the captain's driveway. When you start putting a tent up out there and you got a hundred and fifty, are we gonna be seeing people peeling up in his driveway and, you know, down at Lower Harbor and then busting over? So, I don't know how that's gonna be addressed. I wish we could have something, just a parking lot that would, ugh, anyway.
Well, part of the, part of the plan, you may have seen, um, the plan, it doesn't address a huge event, but it would address the, probably the majority of them. So, we'll be coming forward with, uh, the plan the engineering's working on right now for what the parking situation would look like down there. And it won't solve all the problems, but it'll solve more of them than, uh, the current layout does.
Just as a side note, I mean, we're not looking at wedding receptions, we're looking at weddings.
Right.
And just for that reason alone, at least my perspective is that, uh, um, we don't wanna turn into another large gathering party area that has the associated problems. So, um, and, and the, the space we're looking at, which is right adjacent to the lighthouse itself, I don't think it can hold more than fifty people or so, fifty to seventy-five people. So, you know, we're not, we're not looking at a big, a big area. You know, we get requests quite often from people that wanna get married on the beach or wanna get married in a nice setting along our shoreline, and, and we don't have anything that they can actually reserve. I mean, they can go there and have their wedding, or they can go here and have their wedding, but if someone's walking through the background in the wedding pictures, that's just the way it is. So, we're, we're trying to create something that's kinda small, but quaint and, and available, so, and hopefully not get too out of control.
Uh, I mean, it's gonna be destination anyway for, for photos if nothing else, obviously, but, um, all right, thank you.
Yeah, the, the budget process for the playground was more farther along than that. I thought we were gonna possibly rate the grant this winter and then possibly start building next year. I know what Joni leaving the playgrounds, the, they haven't had a really push for budgeting as much as it used to be, maybe something to talk to Bob about, maybe just get him on the ball, we get stuff going, cause be nice to get that, you know, eventually done, cause it's been a while and, and be good to just get it. And I think with the, if you have events possibly at the other, at the lighthouse area, people have to just, just put in writing and say, okay, you can have like one or two vehicles, is that, you have to get busted. I know it's worked out for other areas, for, for, I think, people can park like at Lakeview or something like that and just get the, my friend works for the bus company and just get busted in there. You know, I've seen it done, it's, the people are willing to accept it and they just have to, because they wanna have the event as a special area, they have to learn the consequences. So, it's good, just something to look at, you know, put that, but say, like Paul said, maybe one or two cars max, and then rest of the bales gets busted in if they don't wanna walk or whatever, but something to look at. Definitely look into the budgeting for the, you know, see if we can move some money around, Gary can move some money around and get the playground going or something like that, cause better for you or so.
Just on a, on a side note, and, I mean, we had quite a significant, uh, impact to the staffing at, uh, the Lakeview Arena and the Parks Department this year with Carl leaving and then replacing him and that person staying for a month and then leaving and then having the place, that position vacant. And then, you know, we had, when he, when, uh, John refers to the staffing situations, it was just dealing with that and, and spreading his, what staff was available kinda thin to deal with a lot during the busiest time of the year, uh, which is basically from, uh, May fifteenth through October first, which is when the beaches open up, the parks open up, and the ball fields open up. So, I'd, I would say under a normal year, we probably would've applied for that grant, um, and be ahead of that game, but this year just didn't fall right.
I think it's something, I know, I know, I know, M U's looked at that, maybe having a grant writing class or some version of their class to write grants for people that, you know, the city has only, you only so much staff at John's office to do all that stuff, so it's something that, I know, I know, M U's possibly looked at, you know, allow, having grant writers to write all that stuff. So, something, you know, we could look at and say, okay, have Gary write a grant for it.
You know, what they need to do is just make grants like one-page application or half a page, then we'd be golden. Now, yeah, they are, some of them are fifty pages, so.
Any other questions on the lighthouse? All right. Moving on to marinas, um, page two seventeen. Uh, this is Presque Isle Marina's.
John, can I ask you just to go back one second?
Yeah.
The lighthouse.
Yeah.
We really need to do some work on opening that, tagging those ceilings back up.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's a great deal of money, but I know that it does have the potential of returning money to the city as you could increase fees for the touring of it. So, I, I really encourage you to figure out some way to, to see if we can't get that work done, uh, cause that kinda puts a zero, uh, improvement right now going on in there until we can get that done.
Right.
So.
Duly noted.
I'll talk with you on it later, but that's, so. Thank you.
Page two seventeen, uh, Presque Isle Marina Fact Sheet. This kinda outlines the, um, the statistics for Presque Isle. And, um, one of the things that I guess I'd like to, to draw your attention to with, uh, Presque Isle, you know, we, we show fifty-two slips, um, and, um, in the deteriorating condition, uh, we're actually down to forty-seven salable slips, um, just in this year alone. So, uh, we've lost a few, um, since we put the fact sheet together. The winds have been kinda ripping things apart up there, and, um, we're well beyond the, the, um, the usable life. I spoke with the, uh, Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterways staff, um, and we're working on the, the animation plan for how, um, the replacement, uh, is gonna work. It's a, a kind of a tight timetable because we can't do anything until the expenditures are approved by the legislature, October first. So, um, but what we can do is get a lot of the legwork done, um, between now and then, so they're working on the grant agreement. We'll get that passed back and forth and signed in all different, uh, ways that needs and, um, and then we'll get an R F P out for the, um, professional contractual to, to build that facility, um, all to be approved and finalized after October first. So, uh, we're, we're greasing the wheels to kinda get that going. With that though, um, one of the stats that I'll point out, um, fuel sales, uh, you know, that was a bit, when we had all the boaters in here, that was a bit, a point of contention that we're not gonna sell fuel at Presque Isle. And, uh, you see, there's about eight thousand dollars in fuel sales, which might seem like a lot, but, um, I believe Cinder Pond is at seventy-two thousand dollars and, um, yeah, we, we had seventy thousand dollars, but I, we think it's gonna be closer to eighty thousand dollars this year. So, uh, add a zero to, to what we're doing at Presque Isle, and that's what's happening at Cinder Pond. So, um, we think we're in the right, uh, right vein with, um, changing things the way that we're looking to do. And, um, if all goes, uh, as planned, we will open the season hopefully on time next year with, um, floating piers at that facility.
The only thing about fuel I would say is that I know, I've heard, you know, Fred's brought there a few times, I've brought there many times, and we know a lot of, I know a lot of boaters up there, and I've heard from many of the boaters, a lot of people will look for fuel, but with staffing being cut back, which is understandable, but they go up to the dock and there's nobody to work the fuel. I noticed that this weekend when I was down at the, the, down south, I had my boat down there and we couldn't get fuel, and none of the mariners were open on Mon- Sunday. We had to go basically from Upper Harbor, Light, Upper Harbor, all the way to our train, that's about how far we'd go just to get fuel. So, it's one thing to look at is, you know, with the dock being reduced, I know I've talked to staff up there, just the wood docks, I've asked about that before, get the wood docks, keep the wood docks, no, they're shot. So, okay, so with limited availability for boats up there, a lot of people are gonna be trailering, so it's always either trailer light than go heavy. So, may see an increase in fuel sales possibly if you keep fuel up there, just to have availability, cause it's a long way to go, you know, for, not very far, but for having people to go up there all the time, stop in, you know, I think it's good to have, at least look at, probably possibly keeping fuel up there. I know we talked about maybe getting rid of it, maybe look at keeping fuel, you know, it's not a huge sales, but if people know it's available and there's staff that's there to help, there'd be more, more keen to go for it, I think, just something to look at, you know? I know with the fuel, and I know, I know, Cinder Pond's always busy, but, you know, so, just something to think about.
Yeah, I thi- I think that, um, I guess I'll address it just briefly. So, we did sort of the math on the, the, what the expense to put in, and then, um, we kind of worked with the D N R to determine, okay, do we need fuel at both facilities? And, and they basically stated, if a municipality has fuel to offer, that's, you're doing better than, than a lot of places. So, um, they felt that it was, it was an appropriate measure to have it at one facility and not at both, um, just due to the, the cost and due to the trends, um, on the Great Lakes. But, um, and the biggest factor is that it's extremely expensive to maintain and to install and to, um, inspect and, um, blow it back every year and all that kind of, uh, stuff. So, we're, we're trying to make these funds as whole as possible, um, utilizing the policy that the commission voted on last year. So, with that in mind, we're trying to reduce all expenses wherever possible to end up putting a fund balance away so we, these things can not draw on the general fund in the future. So, we're getting there actually, which I'll talk about here in a second.
I know you're getting, you're, you're doing a great job balancing all the numbers, and I know it's something to look at, it's easy way to say you don't work out any fuel, but where it goes with decreased dockage space, there's a lot of people, a lot of people like to go up there, go fishing, a lot of smaller boats, so maybe more people looking for fuel possibly. I know it's expensive, I know that they're cheap and the boaters up, friends, my, the boaters up there, people will walk up, look for fuel, like, nope, you get dockages, nope. You know, it's like, basically, they all very helps, uh, you know, which is great, but maybe it's something, you know, you can just, just look at, maybe have your staff, your marine manager's awesome, have them just talk to everybody and see what they think. And I know people are gonna say, yeah, we want it, we didn't wanna pay for it, but I know it's just part of the deal, but just something you look at, maybe just research it a little bit or something.
Sounds good. Any other questions on the, the fact sheet for Presque Isle Marina? None. Page two eighteen is, is really the fee structure for, um, transient boats, so you can see what it costs, um, you know, per slip size, um, and this is approved by the, by the, by the Waterways, um, Commission, so, um, you kinda look down, it's kind of interesting stats. Page two nineteen is, um, this kinda gets into the fees for, for both marinas, and we'll kinda go over that a little bit. Transient, we, um, we said was set by Waterways. This gets into, um, we've got two different plans here for Presque Isle and for Cinder Pond. So, this is the year, the new build year, is when we increase everything by fifteen percent for, uh, Presque Isle. Cinder Pond, we did that last year, we did fifteen percent increase last year. So, now we're flipping it and we're doing a five percent increase for Cinder Pond and a fifteen percent increase for Presque Isle. So, in the end, those, those fees will be, um, the same, say for a thirty-eight foot slip, it'll be exactly the same next year when we prove it. And we did that because, um, the commissioner was working on that policy and we didn't, we weren't able to, um, get to the point where we could build a new facility this year. Get to the point where we could build a new facility this year. And the grant, grant process was also a hindrance to that. So. So we said, let's start with, with Cinder Pond as per the plan and we'll do Prescott the year that we build it. So here we are. Throughout the rest of this, nothing else has changed, um, besides those slip rates. I guess the only thing, other thing I would point out is that we're on the second year of five dollar pumpouts. We were at ten and. More depending on your tank size prior to our Clean Vessels Act, uh, grant that got us all new pumpouts at both marinas. And those new pumpouts will stay at Prescott as well. So we will have that serviced there. If there's no questions on the fees, um, page two twenty. Is the revenues and expenses for Prescott Marina. We have kept this simple and run this um, par for the course. So uh, the revenues are based on um, what we anticipate the new um, facility should be able to hold as far as slips. And um. Then in here, you're gonna see uh, grants. That's five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for grants and then the. Second to la- last uh, line for revenue is another five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And that's the, the bond for the fifty percent match. So one point one million dollars for the new facility. And that's as simple as we can make it. I'm hoping we can, we can do it for that and Fred's, Fred's laughing because he knows how expensive these, these things are. Yeah. You do anything over water, just take whatever you might think the cost of be and triple it and that's about where you ought to be. So that's, that's the project in there. Um, when you back the project out, the revenues are expected to be about ninety-four thousand dollars. When we look down here at expenses, um, we're on par with what we, um, what we have been in the past, maybe a little bit, little bit less even. But we tried to keep um, everything kind of what it typically has been. We. Have done a few reductions. Um, the plan is hopefully to have these be uh, docks that can be iced in. That's still out um, for interpretation by the, the, uh, I guess evaluation by the prime professional. So this would be non-ice eating docks, uh, built a little heavier duty, uh, so you can alleviate the power usages uh, throughout the winter, which is typically our heavier. Usage. So we're hoping, hoping to get that accomplished. We're also hoping, we've left the salaries the same as, as they uh, typically have been. But we're hoping to be able to reduce that. So we're gonna kind of play that one by year. They are what they uh, normally have been. And if we can make it a situation where it's managed from Cinder Pond primarily, we will do that and. Next year we'll have some reduced numbers there, but um, we're playing it safe at this point. Any questions on Prescott's revenues or expenses?
We have a little bit of reduced revenue with twenty-four quarters going away, so hopefully they get up somehow, cause obviously it's gonna cost a few bucks to make a new Marina, so hopefully we can. By the way, uh, have Gary move somewhere around and keep it open.
Just get a lot of money to move around, don't you?
He's good at it. He's good at it. Uh, page two hundred and twenty-one, this is Cinder Pond's uh, statistics and here you see um. What I kind of referred to earlier, the fuel sales. We have seventy thousand in uh, twenty eighteen, but. We think that it'll be closer to eighty-three thousand. We've been selling a ton of fuel. Every time I approve bills, it's, there's another several thousand dollar bill there, um, accompanied with all the revenue. So that's, uh, Cinder Pond's a good news story. Um, I guess I would, I would say. Everything's working pretty well and, and uh, we've got a lot of compliments on the new building. We've got a lot of compliments on. Staffing lately and, and the way that we've been running things. So I think um, we're in good shape there. As a reminder, we're looking forward to possibly the year twenty twenty-four as a potential. Replacement for dockage uh, in that facility and that's what the models were built on. We might be able to get a few more years out of it than that. But that was generation, that was the target date for generation two of um, of Cinder Pond. So. It's not that far out when we start thinking about it. Page two twenty-two, the expenses and revenues. Um, I guess the, the few things um, that call your attention to. The. I guess we could, we could start with um, down at the bottom of the page. We'll start this way. Marina reserve, um, so fifty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty. So that's a, we should be celebrating that number along with the sixty-two thousand dollars we put in the fund last year. Cause that's a first. Um, so nice work to the commission for their work with the policies. And I think we've been working pretty hard to get to this point too. And we're hoping in the real near, near future, we'll be there with Prescott as well.
Yeah, uh, let me just jump in a second. Gary, do you remember how much money we used to be transferring to the marinas? For the new commissioners to get a perspective of this.
Yeah, it was easily a hundred thousand a year that we were doing that.
So this is, this is a remarkable turnaround and the commission that did it, uh, I think deserves a great deal of credit. A couple of years ago, maybe they made that decision. So they, they done good. In spite of caterwauling and hollering and yelling.
We took a lot of abuse to get to.
We had to caterwauling, that's a fact. I gave you credit, guys.
But meetings where there were eighty people and every one of them wanted to talk.
I think the city manager has something to say.
I would say, yeah, so what he's telling you is don't mess with it. You guys, it took us a long time to get here.
I don't know, all I see is preserve.
Well, so.
You make your customers happy.
And I'll remind, I'll remind the commission too, the, the goal with that policy was to um, to get to a point where generation three of both facilities was completely paid for. Out of, out of uh, the Marina fund, um, and without the expectation that there will always be these waterways grants out there. So. Way down the line, thirty years from now, um, when I'm retired on a beach somewhere, um, somebody hopefully will be thanking me for. Helping to set that up. Yeah. Yeah. So, working toward responsibility. And then working our way back up, the expenses, um, eight oh one, professional contractual. We do have some maintenance we have to do to this facility. Um, we've reskinned a few of these docks. That's the. Metal that's underneath the dock, the floating pier that holds the insulation in, the flotation in. Uh, it does deteriorate over time and we do have some, two more of those that we need to do that we've identified. Um, so that's six thousand dollars. Yeah, so we order the material and then our carpenter, uh, Mike Schoen does those. So. Done in-house, but it does, does take some effort to get those out of the water, get them uncoupled, get them rebuilt, get them back in the water. So. About six thousand dollars. Um, and then we do some, every year we go through and pull all the bad boards off and put new ones and. Every once in a while, there's a section we redeck completely because it um, is fairly hard hit. And then we have about three thousand dollars in eight oh one for necessary fuel repairs. We've got some sensors and issues with the aging fuel system that we'll have to. To take uh, into account. So that's kind of, I guess the only other thing on the expense that I point out is uh, seven forty, um, we have two recycling stations. Budget for in there, they're about a thousand dollars a piece. Uh, it's been a huge request from transient and uh, seasonal slip holders that there be a place to recycle things down there. So. We will be adding that next year.
Are you taking glass down there yet?
I'm gonna leave that up to you. I don't know if I have control over it.
Your wood, your, your carpenter's great job fixing all those docks down there. I know him very well and I see him down there all the time. I said, you're gonna give, John, I'm gonna give you help? He said, nope. He just lets me do everything myself. He did just a great job. I would think that's a good idea too, is having a place just to, you can everybody just. There's a lot of beverages down there, put some in the garage and I see people down there all the time. Digging all the beverages out of the trash, trying to recycle. So I mean, I've told Marina manager to just have a can, get one from Waste Manager or something that says. Put the recycle in, it could be any kind of can, it could be refund, non-refund, just, and then let people. The Marina staff could either could take it as a little, you know, staff party or something, all the refunds or. Just people could pick off what they want, you know. Maybe Paul will get on there and get some.
Time's up, Pete.
Average. Oh, that's pretty good.
Well, if there's no more questions about marinas. We're gonna move on to Lakeview Arena, uh, page two hundred and twenty-three. So. Lakeview Arena is one um, that we've worked really hard on um, over the years and um, we've had our ups and downs and our challenges. Um, and I'll kind of explain as we go through this, what we're planning for this um, budget year and how we helped Gary get to the point where we are today. By reducing a few things in there. Um, the first page is the fact sheet and this really kind of outlines and you can see there's just. A ton of things going on here. Um, we've got our staff at the top, but then when you look at ice sales. Junior hockey, figure skating, the high school, um, you know, the public skates, the uh, um, mutineers and all that. There is a lot of stuff um, going on at the arena. We've got um, a busy ice schedule. We're really doing a, a really good job of selling our ice. Um, so um, lots of good use there. And then when you get down to the bottom, you can see, um, we really do have a lot of tenants. So we have a lot of spaces that we're able to rent out to folks. We've got uh, junior hockey, the figure skating is running some things, NTN has their office there. The um, citizens forum has, you know, a pretty substantial income that comes with it. We recently rented the, the space at the very end past the citizens forum to uh, Superior Watershed Partnership. So there's a lot of, a lot of creativity and a lot of reaching out to partners that we've done to try and um, add revenue uh, to this space. As we get into the, the expenses and the revenues, I'll kind of explain what the plan is for this year. Couple of things that we can do to, to help things out. Any questions on the fact sheet for Lakeview? Next page is uh, two twenty-four, this is the fee schedule for Lakeview Arena. I guess the first thing with this that I'd say is, is we're not planning on increasing ice rates this year. The reason we're not planning to increase ice rates this year is that we would like to, this is another spot, we would like to get ahead of the game. We would like to uh, make the push um, over this winter to have the commission approve um, increased fees for next year. So instead of increasing the rates right now and these groups trying to budget for um, the ice they're gonna be paying for next month. Let's do it, you know, at least nine months ahead of time. So they have time to do their budgets, just like we're doing ours. So um, we'll be coming forward to you um, with an increase somewhere between uh, two hundred dollars an hour and two hundred and fifteen. And we're working on, on looking at uh, all the different arenas around to figure out what that's gonna be. So that's, that's where we're at on, on ice. As we kind of move down through the fee schedule, there's a couple of things that changed. Weddings for um, the Russell, under Russell Arena. We used to set everything up um, for them in an effort to market this and get this, um, get more people involved in this for eight hundred and fifty dollars a day. Whereas if you have an event there, it's fourteen hundred dollars, plus you pay for the tables, plus you pay for the chairs, plus you pay for the pipe and drape. So what we're looking to do is make, bring that more in line with the um, with the uh, dry floor, but still have an incentive. Because we'll still give you the tables and chairs for your wedding um, in that um, up to a certain extent. So that would be a change um, that we're asking you to approve. The other one is um, similar to what we did in the, in the park um, budget and that is um, a flat utility rate. So. Um, if we do get uh, an event in there that uses a ton of power, um, we can charge them that three hundred dollars. Some of the contracts we have, we've been charging them two hundred and fifty dollars through the contract um, for that already. But we figured we put it in the fee schedule and, and increase um, that to a, to reflect the new rates. Same thing with um, with the Olson, those rates are reflective uh, for the wedding of what the dry floor be as well as the utility rate. The only other change to Lakeview's is um, you'll see parking lot, high impact. No inside, so we've had a lot of requests to use the parking lot outside uh, for events. We've had feeding American veterans, we've had. The loader show, we've had all these different, different things where they want to use the parking lot. Well, as we all know, parking lots are expensive. It's about um, a million dollars to redo the entire parking lot all the way around, plus all the sidewalks, plus all that. About eight hundred thousand dollars just for the parking lot. So we're trying to get to the point where we have a fee um, that's similar to our parks. If you uh, set up a. A uh. A tent next to the pavilion, you want extra space, then there's a, a fee for that, it's about two hundred and sixty-five bucks. So that's, that's a new fee if you, if the commission approves it. And I think that we get quite a few takers. We already have people using it to that extent. Any question on the fees?
John, just a comment, I appreciate seeing the differential between resident and non-resident. Remember that being another long fight. But I think it's uh, it is extremely appropriate and certainly one that uh, works everyone's advantage. Thank you.
And that just again is, is a calculation on, um, we actually did the math to see what. What each one of these fees costs a resident due to their taxes and then we, it's an equalization fee. So it, it really isn't dinging the non-resident anymore, it's just making them pay the, the same as what the resident does.
I haven't taken a hard look at it for over a year, but um, now that we have our own line painter. Can we get some appropriate parking lot marks in that parking spaces?
Soon as they do Lakeview.
That's what I'm, well, that's what, yeah, okay, good. Just swing in there and do the whole thing. Looking at whatever event it is, whether it's the time for voting or whatever uh, event is going on, we're losing half that parking lot to stupid parkers. And you know, it's just. Amazing how people don't think how to park.
The guys tell me it's hard to, to paint on rubble, but.
Don't see the lines.
Chalk it then.
For concrete, you don't, you'd be fine.
Snap some lines, whatever.
Snow's here, there's no lines. I can park anywhere I want, anywhere.
Bigger lines at the senior center.
Raised lines.
Well, if there's no other questions about fees, um, page two twenty-five, um, this is the nitty gritty of Lakeview Arena. So revenue side, um, we answered Gary's call and um, really kind of dug deep both on revenues and expenses to try and. Trim some things up. The rent, uh, we increased that from what, what we had originally proposed to sixty-two thousand dollars. We have one more space uh, that we think we can fill. We maybe have a, a potential interested party right now. If that doesn't work out, then maybe we'll put it out for proposals. But it's one more small office space and then everything will be full. So we're gonna maximize that. Um, the ice skate rental, um, we have purchased uh, new skates in the previous two years. So. We think that uh, we're gonna see increased revenue with the ice skates. And then one of our perpetual challenges, if you go to um, any big time arena, all the dasher boards and the Zambonis and the scoreboards all have advertisement on them. And we haven't had a lot of luck uh, in doing that in the past, but um, we're gonna work really diligently and we've already gotten a little bit of interest um, now with uh. I think, as weird as it sounds, I think the new lighting that Johnson Controls has put in is really gonna kind of help that. Um, if you go to a hockey game this, this uh, winter, you may want to bring sunglasses, cause it's, it's gonna be pretty brill- If you go to a hockey game this, this winter, you may want to bring sunglasses, because it's, it's gonna be pretty brilliant in there. So I think that might make it a little more attractive for folks to advertise. It just looks cleaner, it looks crisper. So we're gonna work really hard to hit that $8,000 mark for, for revenue on the advertising. As we get down into the expenses, we had budgeted $4,000 for conferences, that's 865. We do have a new Parks and Recreation Coordinator, and Andrew McIver, the Assistant Director, is almost finished with his ice training, so we were gonna send both of them to get training on that, but we did trim that out. We're gonna send Andrew to finish up his, and then we'll start with the Parks and Rec Coordinator next budget season. So that saved a little bit. And then one that I have a little heartburn about, but it's, I, I think it's a good thing. Vehicle replacement, the last one, $5,000. That actually goes to a dedicated fund to replace the Zambonis. We are currently somewhere around $75,000 in that fund, and no, Fred, you can't take it. But the, a new Zamboni, which is, we're about four years overdue for a new Zamboni, based on how long these things are supposed to last. We estimate next year it'll be about 115,000, so we cut the 5,000 out, but we're still quite a bit short of what we would need. So if it, you know, when that time comes, we may just have to have Gary work some magic on that. What do you, Gary?
So you're telling us we're gonna get an emergency requirement for a Zamboni?
Well.
There's some humor, humor in that. I understand that.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, the guys down at.
8, 900 hockey players of all ages and sizes.
Marching, marching on City Hall? I'll tell you, the guys down at DPW do a really good job, and they get pretty creative. Some of the invoices, I saw something come by, through for $3 for a knob for the conditioner. It was some, I, I think it was meant for like a broomstick or something. It wasn't.
They can fix the Zambonis?
Oh, yeah. They, yeah, they, they do some really good work.
There's a rebuilt Chevy underneath. I know they're at school, there's a rebuilt Chevy underneath.
Don't tell anybody, but it's a Volkswagen. The, I guess the other thing in this that I would point out, 740 operating supplies. That kind of basically can dis, consists of the supplies we need to make the ice, so the paint and the decals for the, the lines and the emblems. Cleaning supplies for the arena, and this part, I, I guess I'm kind of excited about black drapes. So right now, we have, we have drape that we use for events at the arena that is green and gold from back in the days when NMU used the arena. This $3,000 investment, we think, is going to help draw in some of the dry floor users in the weddings. If we can make that place more presentable for the dry floor time. I pointed out all the users we have for the ice. Where we can really improve things is on the dry floor side of things. If we can start attracting the weddings, if we can start attracting some of these events, like we used to have the food show and the dog show and a few of those, there used to be a rec show that would come. If we can start investing on the dry floor side of things, I think we're gonna see that be a better opportunity to increase revenue and, and to sustain Lakeview than, than trying to constantly raise the ice rates. The other, the other piece that I could say with this is that it's gonna be interesting to see how, how all of the efficiency efforts that we put into the facility through Johnson Controls kind of shake out. We've been testing the new ice plant, and so far, so good. We haven't had, had any issues. It's been cooling better than expected, so. And then I mentioned the lighting. It's 10 times brighter for 10 times less the money to light it up. So all these things go a long way toward the goal of eventually getting this thing more sustainable, so. It's a huge, huge facility for, for a winter city. A lot of kids. This has a huge impact on them, so we know it, it does cost the city a little bit of money, but we think it's, it's a pretty good thing for paying for the buck for, for what we're doing there, so. Any questions on Lakeview's budget?
Just a comment. I think a lot of people don't realize that a lot more goes on at Lakeview Arena than just hockey. A lot of people think it's just hockey. I don't play hockey, my kids don't play hockey, so why? Well, this, this is a great indication of what else goes on there. I like your idea of increasing dry, dry floor events, because those are huge. There are already some good ones, been some traditional ones, been there for quite a while, but it's, it's a great way to use the arena. It's, it really is a gem for our city, so.
And just to point out, I know this was a point of discussion at our first budget session, but the general fund does provide a large amount of support to this fund. It's in the range of just over $300,000 per year now. It's varied between 200 and 300,000. But back in the day, when I first started, and like 17 years ago, we were actually transferring close to half a million dollars a year, so. Their staff has basically bled to turn it as dry as they can, and I just think, forced to continue to operate the arena, the, you know, the way the public expects, it's just a given that we're gonna be transferring about 300,000 at a minimum per year to keep it going. And as we discussed at the time, the only, really the only time that I've seen anyway, and this was before my time here, that the arena actually made money was back when the university played hockey there, and there were also big ticket concert events there. And none of that is happening anymore, so I think staff, John and his staff are doing everything they can, but I think it's just a reality that we're gonna be pumping around $300,000 a year to keep it going.
One creative idea, and don't count on it quite yet, but we're working with Great Lakes Rodeo to have a rodeo come in April, so we'll see how that turns out.
Little riding on ice, I love it.
John, we haven't really looked at anything that, I mean, you're talking about the new lighting and that. We really haven't looked at any savings Johnson Controls has brought to us yet, because I think we're in, we're not quite in a position yet to know. You talked about the new, the new chillers, the new, new machines, and like you said, the lights and that. There's still work to be, to be done there, is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think we're wrapping things up. I don't think there's, I think all, well, the ice plant is done. They're just testing and fine tuning the programming on it.
We're gonna have better numbers, I think, next year at this time, as to what kind of savings we've got out of that, and that may change the whole picture.
Yep, there's a little bit left to be done lighting wise, but it's mostly done, so.
That doesn't even count Hockey Town, or Hockey, Hockeyville. Changes also that have helped.
Yep.
If we can get the Red Wings up here for spring training instead of Traverse City, we'd, maybe we'd.
There you go. That would, that would actually help.
Or they're, they're, we call it spring training, but obviously it's in the fall.
John, the transfer in from the general fund, 322,000, do you see that going up or down? Or we want, we'd like it to go down, but in the future years, is it gonna, did you have a?
Yeah, so, so our, our goal is to, to reduce that. Obviously, we do have, I mean, we've got a, part of the thing that wasn't on the, wasn't presented to you with the, the capital that was kind of cut out was the parking lot. So, you know, if we undertake a project like that, you know, that's obviously gonna have, that's about $800,000. It'd have $80,000 a year bond payment. So there's expenses to upgrading, getting the facility to where it needs to be, and that's probably the, one of the first ones that we're gonna need to look at. But I, I think that there's an opportunity to, to reduce it. I don't know if we'll ever see it go away, but I think there's an opportunity to, to fill the place more often in the summer, and I think we, we can reduce that down below that number.
So that concludes the John, the John, almost two and a half hours.
Just stick around, I'm sure he's gonna taste me.
Okay, we have one more, one more, you have more?
I, I was just gonna wrap some stuff up, if that's okay.
Please do, yes.
Just the, the next session will be Thursday at 3 o'clock, and we will be discussing public works and utilities. Part of that discussion will be the recommended utility rate increases. So I highly recommend, if anybody's listening in, to please show up and let us know what you think. With that, I am done. Thank you.
With that, we'll move to our last public comment. I'll open public comment. Shen, you got anything to say? No? Seeing nobody wanting to comment, we're gonna close public comment. Comments from the commission, anybody? Fire away.